The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved, and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Weyburn City Council held in council chambers at 6:00 PM, Monday, June 24th, 2024. Just to say that that was quite a storm last night. We didn't get hit quite as bad as Esteban. Listening to talking prior to the meeting here, I guess Esteban had a lot of like huge hail coming down, windshield's taking out, a lot of car damage, and a lot of damage here. We most certainly escaped that. We just had rain, but the ground sure seemed to soak that whatever we got up here. So we were fortunate. Nothing really happened, except for the odd tree that came down in the city, but other than that, we were really good. So with that, let's start into the meeting, and we'll have approvals of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held June 10th, 2024. May I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the minutes of the regular council meeting and the strategic planning and priorities committee meeting held June the 10th, 2024 be accepted as presented.
Second?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Call the question. All in favor? carried unanimously. Additions to the agenda. Mr. Warren?
Thanks, your worship. There's no additions from administration tonight?
Counsel? Nothing? There's no public hearings and notices, delegations, proclamations, or petitions? There is none this evening? Reports of standing committees? There is none. On our consent agenda, we have the fire report for May, Public Water Treatment System Annual Operating Report, and we have the traffic study, Government Road and First Avenue report. There is... Do we have a motion to receive?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the following items be accepted on the consent agenda: the fire report for May, Public Water Treatment System Annual Operating Report 2023, and the traffic study report for Government Road and First Avenue.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Warren.
Thank you, worship. Jen, just a quick follow-up. The traffic study report, this is just information to counsel regarding a couple of the studies that were done around what's already been in place.
Yep. So with this traffic study, we did want to take a look because we were putting the new traffic lights up. We just wanted to confirm that the current configuration matched. So this was done through a previous study. So we updated the study just based on traffic volumes and to ensure that the current lane configuration did meet the needs of the city and if the traffic volumes had drastically changed at this intersection. And so by doing the traffic study, it did confirm that the current configuration does provide the highest level of service, which was a B on a scale of A to F, with A being free-flowing conditions. So we do have a level of service of B there, and we did actually run a full scenario that if we would put turning arrows in, what that would change, and it actually decreases the level of service to that intersection, with most lanes would see a C or a D, and we'd actually have traffic flow problems. So the current configuration at Government Road and First Avenue is the correct configuration based on the current traffic we have there. Thank you very much.
Rip?
Thanks, your worship. Thanks, Jen, for all your work. I want to be sure that we all understand this is not, by the way, a study that we just do internally. We hire folks that are experts in this kind of work, and could you just help us understand who was hired to do the work, kind of a bit of the scope, and when it was done?
Yeah, so for this one, we would have done an RFP that was sent out. And so that RFP was awarded to WSP, which is an engineering firm, and they did traffic volumes, and then they were there on Tuesday, April 30th, and Wednesday, May 1st, so school was in. That's one of the biggest things. We insisted that it had to be a school day, because we know that can be a big thing. And so they collected all the data, and then they do like analysis, and they are meeting City of Regina Design Standards Transportation and the Manual of Information Traffic Control Devices for Canada. So they are meeting like regulatory or standards set out by municipalities, as well as they do modeling on it, which is in kind of standard. The model they use is traffic engineering model that is accepted standard for this.
Because I think one of the things that has always been said to me, that we think the way the lanes are designed up there right now, that it's nowhere else in the world. It has this type of thing. And I would, I would take it that because this engineering firm has seen this, they've seen this in other cities. It's not like we are the one unique place in all of North America that has that type of, the way we set our intersection. The problem is that we've got these, these lanes are just, we'd have to take out houses or take out property to widen the lanes, and we're not going to do it, so we have to make the best of the world.
Yeah, and so I mean, the only way to possibly reach a possible A for level of service there would be to remove the sidewalks, buy property, and push back, and fully add lanes in there. And I mean, that's just not a practical scenario for the way that is set up. But we can still accomplish a B, which is what a lot of intersections would be across this city, as well as in other cities. And B is a very good level of service.
Anything else, Mr. Hanks?
Being that it's on 13 Highway, First Avenue, or whatever, is the provincial government highways involved in any of that feedback? Or they just, it's within the city, so they don't worry about it, or how does that work?
So when we do a lot of this information, or we're going to make changes or different things like that, we always work with the highways, and we will send things through them. So I'll use example like we were doing speed limit changes to our traffic bylaw. We talked with them through this. For this, we usually will provide studies, or if they notice an area of issue that is not meeting a standard, they will actually contact us and say, "Not our jurisdiction, because it is within city limits, but we would recommend you take a look at this area." So we're doing another traffic study in a different area on Highway 39. It's within our limits, but the provincial highways department, they did flag it to us as they saw an issue there, not meeting standards. They would like us to look at it with the traffic study. So we do share a lot of information, as well as we work with them, so they know like we're doing all this upgrade and infrastructure there, so they were well aware of it.
Okay, good. Just one other comment. In regards to the water report, I'm not saying I understood everything I read in there, but I would strongly recommend that anybody has the opportunity to flip through there and have a look at that on our website. You start to understand how your water bill can be, what it is. I mean, it's amazing work that these guys do. It's really...
Yeah, Shabir and Renee put an extensive amount of effort and time into that report, and we will, after this meeting, be putting it onto our website, so you can see the 2023 report, as well as we do put just kind of a little note at the bottom of all the utility bills. If you are flipping through your utility bill, you will notice that it has been placed on our website. We put that on our utility bills as well. So yes, there's lots of good information in there.
So do you have a motion to... Do you have a motion? So call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. So that would be marked as received, and all these will be on the website. Motions. The first one, tax enforcement consent title. Laura?
Thank you. As per Section 24 of the Tax Enforcement Act, a letter requesting consent of title for the provincial mediation board will be sent on the following properties. The property owners have received their six-month notice and have not paid the outstanding taxes. The next step is to send a letter to the provincial mediation board requesting consent of title on the properties. The cost to do this is $20 per property. Once the mediation board is notified, the board will make contact with the property owner, and together with the property owner and the board, they'll make payment arrangements. If the board does not make contact with the owner, or the owner fails to make payment, the board will then give consent, or give permission for consent of title.
So do we have a motion? Go ahead.
Your worship, I'd make a motion that council give authorization to the city assessor to start proceedings with the provincial mediation board for title on the properties with tax liens as presented six months ago.
Your worship, I'll second that motion. Discussion?
Just as a point of interest, is it, is it more money than usual? Is it more properties, less properties, more, less money?
It's both the same. It's usually around the same amount, 120 to 140.
Thank you.
I guess, Laura, too, once we pass this one, where we start making moves forward, how often do we, how much do we lose out of that, or how many titles do we usually pick up?
We don't usually pick up many titles. We've only picked up three, I think, in the last 10 years. So usually the property owners start making payments, so that we don't have to take consent.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. The second one, the 2024 geotechnical investigation RFP. Jen?
Thank you. The engineering department has budgeted $75,000 for traffic studies and road assessments under the 2024 General Operating Fund in the engineering budget. There's already been $24,000 committed for the traffic studies this year. This proposed road assessment program consists of a great hole investigation and asphalt, a rehabilitation recommendation for a number of roadways that will be rehabilitated under Urban Highway Connector Program funding and the Infrastructure Revitalization Program for 2025 and the following years. These engineered road assessment reports and rehabilitation design recommendations will allow for more accurate budgeting allocations for the UHCP funding applications, as well as for the city operating budget. So on May 31st, a request for proposal was posted on the city's online bidding portal, bids and tenders, SaaS tenders, and city's website. Proposals were to be received by the City of Weyburn by June 17th at 1:00 PM, and a total of eight were received, and they are summarized below. Proposals submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders understood the scope of work involved, had similar project experience, the required qualifications, and to ensure the project delivery schedule could be met. All of the proposals met the requirements. So it is recommended that the 2024 Geotechnical Investigation be awarded to Ground Engineering Consultants Limited for $36,750 excluding taxes, and they were the low bidder.
Do you have a motion?
Your worship, I would move that the 2024 Geotechnical Investigation be awarded to Ground Engineering Consultants Limited for $36,750 excluding taxes.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? And I see the one that is just right, really close there, a little within. Any difference? Or I guess three top are very close.
Yeah, they were all very close, and they, they all have good experience, good qualifications, and in the end, it was, we took the lowest bidder.
Okay. Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. The next one. The introduction bylaws. Bylaw 2024-3482, short-term borrowing bylaw. Laura?
Thank you. At the April 8th regular council meeting, city council approved the overage of the First Avenue paving project of $662,760.67, with the intent to utilize the City of Weyburn's line of credit for the overage. The current short-term borrowing bylaw, 2003, 3000, with the Weyburn Credit Union, has a limit of $500,000 at a rate of 4.5%. So an amendment to the short-term borrowing bylaw to a maximum of $1 million, with a rate of prime less 1%, was given first reading at the May 27th, 2024 regular council meeting. Public notices were published in accordance with the city's public notice policy. Notices were advertised in the June 5th and June 12th edition of the Weyburn Review, and posted at City Hall and on the city's website. So council has two options. Option one is to give second and third reading and pass bylaw 2024-3482, being a bylaw to amend the short-term borrowing bylaw to $1 million with a rate of prime less 1%. Or option two, council to refuse the, to give second and third reading to the bylaw 2024-3482 and provide refusal based on the following reasons. Any officer making a motion for refusal shall provide reasons for the refusal. Staff recommendation is option one, council give second and third reading and pass bylaw 2024-3482, being a bylaw to amend the short-term borrowing bylaw to $1 million with a rate of prime less 1%.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2024-3482, being a short-term borrowing bylaw amendment, be read a second time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Do you have third reading?
Yours. Counselor Janki, I abstained from that vote simply because we were in a conflict when the bylaw was first drawn.
Okay, right. So, so, but it's still passed unanimously. Yes. Next?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2024-3482, being a short-term borrowing bylaw amendment, be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Again, two members abstaining because of conflict of interest. Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. So that bylaw is passed. Bylaw 2024-3483, swimming pool bylaw. Patrick?
Turn my mic on, yeah, sorry. City Weyburn through its zoning bylaw 2020-3412 does not currently have any regulations regarding proper permits, setbacks, or approval locations for private swimming pools. As such, no permits have been issued or inspections completed for such installations, leaving only recommended setbacks to be adopted from Section 5115 accessory uses of the zoning bylaw. So discussion with, within the current City of Weyburn zoning bylaw 2023412, there is no clear definition of swimming pools, nor are there any standards in place for the city to guide such activities. Research found that Weyburn is one of the only major cities or towns in Saskatchewan that does not have any regulations in place for privately-owned swimming pools and hot tubs. There's been an increase in requests from residents for information surrounding regulations for installation of swimming pools in their yards. Staff had to do extensive research by reviewing other cities' swimming pool bylaws, as well as swimming pool standards issued by the government of Saskatchewan to guide the development of this proposed bylaw. Building codes also had to be reviewed to determine what codes would guide the building. Fish officers' inspections of any pool or hot tub installation, decks, review recommendations from the building officer would also be used as a guide for any above-ground pool and hot tub placement. Swimming pools are an accessory use, an accessory use to permitted use, and a development and building permit will be required for future pool installations, as well as a plan showing the location in the yard, in addition to the depth and dimension of the proposed pool. Fencing and enclosure specifications must also be identified. If council wishes to implement swimming pool bylaw, the city's zoning bylaw would need to be amended to address future swimming pool developments. If implemented, the bylaw will regulate future pools and hot tub installations, as well as the maintenance of any existing swimming pools and hot tubs. So since council gave the bylaw first reading at the May 27th, 2024 regular council meeting, staff have made the following minor changes on the feedback received. Section 8.2 has been added to address the types of pools that are not included within the bylaw, as concerns are raised as to the types of pools the bylaw would affect. Okay, and then Section 16 and 17 had some minor changes added to reflect the concerns raised about self-locking and self-closing devices for pools and hot tub enclosures. So council options. Option one, council gives second and third reading to bylaw 2024-3483 as presented with the mentioned above amendments. Option two, council requests amendments to bylaw 2024-3483 before a second reading. And option three, council refuses to give second and third reading to bylaw 2024-3483. Recommendations would be that option one, council gives second and third reading to bylaw 2024-3483 as presented with mentioned amendments.
Your worship, I move that bylaw 2024-3483, being a swimming pool bylaw, be read a second time tonight.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Mr. Hanks?
So in the recommendations or the things you took back after the last meeting, 8.2, 16, and 17, what are the changes?
Okay, do you want me to read what it was and what we changed it to? So 8.2, we just added in. So it was originally temporarily installed during use and removed whenever the pool is not in use. Okay, so we changed it to children's playpools or paddling pools, which are designed and sold for toddler-age children, which are generally an inflatable type of pool, or a pool which are under 0.6 meters in depth. So just a little more accurate and a little more defined, I think, on that one? Makes sense?
Okay, so about 16 and 17 as well?
Nope. Oh, sorry. That was, that's 8.2, so 16. Just clarified the gates and the, and the self-closing portion of the gates. Do you want, do you want me to read it in full?
Yeah.
Okay. A gate which forms part of an enclosure must be installed to swing outward in the direction away from the swimming pool, and equipped with a self-closing and self-locking device, designed to return the gate to the closed position after each use, and keeping the gate closed after each use. That's 16. And 17 is when a swimming pool is not attended by the owner or occupant, gates, doors, and other entrances to the swimming pool area must be locked by self-closing and self-locking device.
Go ahead, Mr. Jane.
Apologies, Patrick. I should, I meant to reach out and say that it wasn't included with the package. Like, maybe I could have found this answer myself. But in regards to draining a pool, if it's a smaller one that's still covered, and it's, the level, water level is low enough, and the chlorine's evaporated out, can you drain it onto your own grass to water it? Is that acceptable, as long as it's not going into the storm drains?
Jen, do you want to help me out here?
And not leaving your property, obviously.
Um... I, I guess we can't prevent that, but yeah, if it left your property into the storm drains, just because you're not taking the hose and putting it directly into the storm drain, doesn't mean it doesn't make its way to the storm drain. So I'm going to say that it still needs to be directed to the sewer. Because if you're going to release that amount of water, I guess if it was minimal, I mean, you're always going to have water that's going to splash over the edge of a hot tub or a pool or everything, but with that extent of water, I suspect it's going to leave your property. Like, if you were to drain, like, for your hot tub for the winter, or your amount of pool, it's going to leave your property, which means you should have been directing it to the sewer. You'll get dinged by the bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, I just, that, that's a, that's a tough one, because if it never leaves your property, but you got to think it's still soaking into the ground, which is what we're trying to avoid, right? We're trying to avoid it getting out to the system, so, yeah.
Okay. No further discussion. Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Terrible.
Your worship, I move the bylaw 2024-3483, being a swimming pool bylaw, be read a third time tonight and passed.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Next on the agenda is the new business, property sale. Lot 2431, block 3, Plan AZ357. Charlie?
The city has received an offer to purchase from Derek Schanner for a total of 0.7 acres. The offer to purchase is for $8,640 plus GST, at the market price of $12,000 per acre for beer land charged by the City of Weyburn. The applicant is proposing to use the land for tire repair and workshop. Lot 24 of the intended property is zoned as mixed use, and Lot 25 to 31 is zoned as parks and open space, which would require public notices to be issued prior to the sale, as it was designated for parks purposes in the official community plan. Public notices will be advertised in the newspaper at City Hall and the City of Weyburn's website, in addition to be sent to registered owners within a 75-meter radius of the property. Council approval is required for a sale of this nature, as it has not been advertised for sale, as well as being designated as a parks and open space. The applicant is proposing to build a 1,600-square-foot tire repair and workshop on the site. The land is zoned mixed use, as well as parks and open space. The parcels are located in the fringe overlay zone, flood fringe overlay zone. Therefore, all new construction must be adequately flood-proofed to a minimum of 0.5 meters above the 1-500-year flooded elevation, flood elevation. The land is not currently advertised by the City of Weyburn, and council approval is required for the sale of this nature, as a portion of the land is designated as municipal reserve. So we have just a map of the property, the proposed property, the size of each lot that he intends to purchase. And that blue section at the corner is just the river that runs close to the property. The sale will be contingent upon the following conditions: successful approval of a discretionary use development permit in the mixed-use district, or the MU zone; consolidation and registration of the parcels at the cost of the purchaser; rezoning of the parcels identified as parks and open space to mixed-use district at the cost of the purchaser as well; amending the land use designation map of the official community plan at the cost of the purchaser; the development of the tire repair and workshop is required within two years of the closing date of the agreement; the land is sold as is where is, meaning any improvements or upgrades to roads, services, utilities, and other infrastructure is to be at the cost of the purchaser; the city's standard sale agreement conditions, deposits, closing, land registration costs, et cetera, off-site development levies will be applicable, separate from the purchase price, at a rate of $4.51 per square foot, which will be charged at the development permit stage. So council options. Option one. Approve the sale of Lot 24 to 31, Block 3, Plan AZ357, to Derek Schanner for the purchase price offered of $8,640 plus applicable GST, with the conditions listed above, and that the city clerk be authorized to sign said sale agreement. Deny the sale of Lot 24 to 31, Block 3, Plan AZ357, to Derek Schanner and direct administration to advise the applicant of the denial. Reasons for denial would be provided. Staff recommendation, we recommend option one. Council approves the sale of Lot 24 to 31, Block 3, Plan AZ357, to Derek Schanner for the purchase price offered of $8,640 plus GST, subject to the conditions listed above.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I would move that council approve the sale of lots 24 to 31, Block 3, Plan AZ357, to Derek Schanner for the purchase price offered of $8,640 plus GST. The sale will be contingent upon the following conditions: successful approval of a discretionary use development permit in the mixed-use district, consolidation and registration- consolidation and registration of the parcels at the cost of the purchaser. Rezoning of the parcels identified in the parks and open space to mixed use district at the cost of the purchaser. Amending the land use designation map of the official community plan at the cost of the purchaser. The development of tire repair and workshop is required within two years of the closing date of the agreement. The land is sold as is, whereas meaning by any improvements, upgrades to roads, service utilities and other infrastructure is to be at the cost of the purchaser. The city's standard sale agreement conditions, i.e. deposits, closing, land registry costs, et cetera. Uh, offsite development levies will be applicable separate from the purchase price at a rate of four dollars and fifty one cents per square foot, which will be charged at the development permit stage.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion?
Thanks, your worship. This is great news, Shirley. Thanks for bringing this. The only question I had uh, was the access to that particular piece of property is, uh, Spartan to say the least. So I want to be sure that the purchaser understands that, that, uh, city of Wayburn isn't going to be uh, building a road into there. You've had that discussion with the purchaser. They understand that?
Yes, and we explained all the costs and the procedures that he would have to go through to obtain that property and he was okay with that.
Very good. Thanks so much.
Kind of further to that history behind that, Charlie, is because again, in the past, we had there was other, other people within the area that were again, uh, asking for improvements when all this property was sold as is where is sort of thing, so we have to. This just is the way it is. So with that being said, any other discussion?
Thank you, worship. Do we know the property to the north, whether it is a half a meter above the flood plain? Built pro, built up that high?
I can get more information on that and get back to you related to that property.
Lower and then all of a sudden this property is up quite a bit higher, we're gonna dump a bunch of water onto that property.
Yeah, yeah, I could get more information on that. We did not look into the property, um, above it. Um, but I can get it and get back to you on that one.
Yeah, so I don't know what, where we're at in that, yeah.
I would, I would think that it's as is where is. And you would, again, this would be, once he purchased it, that he also knows too that that's what he bought and that's where he has, and it's not up to us. You have to make provision as such.
I, I disagree with your worship because I think if we sell a property and tell him he can build as long as he's a half a meter above the flood plain and then he drains down onto somebody else's and floods them, even though it says you have to hold your drainage in there, there's no storm sewer around there or anything like that, so it's I don't know whether to create a problem, but it may create a liability for the city. And maybe Jen could add, or Matthew, I'm not sure if there's anything you can.
It is written into the zoning by law that you cannot adversely affect other's people's property, which includes draining onto them. So they would have a requirement if they build up that they have to keep the water not draining to the neighboring properties. You have to dr- drain to the streetway or whatever. So that would be a condition of when he does build it up, because he will be required to build it up. He will have to figure out his drainage as well. There's a double side.
Up there than it is in many other parts of the city.
But yeah, council, that's the whole thing, so then it'd be his responsibility to have that figured out. We understand the question that's
Any other discussion?
Thanks, worship. And I, and I suppose we've not heard from the neighbors yet. That would be the next step in the process.
Yes, that would be the next step.
Something that would get identified and clarified going forward as well.
Call the question, all in favor? Uh, you have got two more here. Uh, Big C Burger food truck. Request for placement.
A development permit application has been received and approved for Big C's burger, burger food truck um, to operate within the city. They are now requesting periodic usage of parts of the parking lot located at First Street, which is city owned parking. Therefore, the request requires, um, council approval. Requests similar to this one have been approved by council in the past for food trucks to locate on city owned land. They are currently looking at operating there one to two weekdays, um, for lunches and on Saturdays eleven to four P M. Um, I do have an aerial image of the proposed area of the parking lot. Um, he did mention it to be right by the building. The request was circulated to applicable city departments and no major concerns with the, the requests were received. However, the following comments were provided. Pedestrian flow should not be in the direction of, um, incoming traffic. The food truck should not interfere with the flow of traffic in the parking lots or obstruct pedestrian circulation. All structures, signage, refuge and other associated, associated materials must be removed and the site left in a neat and tidy condition. The city will not be providing any power or wa- water supply to the food truck. For council options, option one, council approves a temporary placement of the Big C Burgers mobile food concession within the First Street parking lot without further conditions. Option two, council approves a temporary placement of the Big C Burgers mobile food concession within the First Street parking lot, subject to the following conditions. The mobile concession truck is not permitted to park on any city owned land other than that of, uh, First Street parking lot without separate approval through development permit application. The city may request the removal of the food truck at any time if it is determined that the mobile food concession is causing a nuisance or excessively interfering with the traffic and pedestrian flow within the First Street parking lot. Where the mobile concession is operating on privately owned land, the owner's permission must be obtained prior to operation. The mobile food truck will not be parked so as to obstruct pedestrian or vehicular circulation or to create an unsafe condition for customers or vehicles. The operator shall be respectful of pedestrian traffic utilizing public sidewalks. Upon completion of the temporary use, the mobile food truck, all structures associated, all structures, associated materials and signage must be removed and the site left in a neat and tidy condition. City of Wayburn business license must be obtained prior to operation and should this mobile concession cause congestion and safety issues for the public, the permit and operation will be reviewed and may be amended. Option three, council directs the development officer to refuse a temporary placement of the Big C's Burger mobile food concession at the First Street parking lot for the following reasons. Any proposed use must have a reason for refusal. The officer making the motion for refusal should provide reasons for the permit's refusal in their motion. Staff recommendation, the request is not expected to have a negative impact on the operations of the First Street parking lot, provided the conditions of approval are complied with. It is not expected that there be any negative onsite or offsite impacts to allowing food trucks, allowing the food truck access to the site. Therefore, staff are recommending option two to approve the request for temporary placement of Big C Burgers mobile food concession at the First Street parking lot, subject to the conditions lis- listed in option two.
No motion, please?
Your worship, I'd make a motion that council approve the request for temporary placement of Big C's Burger Mobile Food Concession at the First Street Parking Lot, subject to the, all of the conditions that were just listed.
Second, or?
I will second that motion, your, your worship.
With all the conditions, just listen.
Just to be clear. Correct. With that, with that, uh, discussion?
Just out of curiosity, uh, it says temporary. How long are we looking at?
Sorry. Um, so one or two days per week and on weekends.
But for how long?
For the remaining of the season, so not for the whole year, so for about two, three months.
Okay, so to the end of the summer?
Yeah, till the end of summer.
Yeah, our food trucks usually go until into September, is it usually, has we ever had those conditions in place?
Understood, it just wasn't specific within the motion or the report.
Thanks, your worship. Uh, a question that is unfair to you, so I'll look to the city manager for the answer. I think in the past, uh, when we approved these, one of the conditions has been that they must obtain a valid, uh, certificate from public health. Now, maybe that's a, a foregone conclusion and we don't need to include it. I'm just curious to make sure that.
Yep, so that's a request when they come through and talk to our departments. We ask that see the show that they have
Perfect.
All the way through, as well as they have to have inspections as well, proper inspections through other entities as well.
And we validate that, we have looked at, very good, thank you.
I bet you.
Is this limited then to maximum of two times per week and then plus Saturday, I guess so?
Yes.
Alright, yeah. Thank you.
That's not to say they have to reapply next year, though.
Um, so yes, every year they do have to reapply.
No further questions? No further discussion, call the question, all in favor? We have, uh, Wayburn Trails Association, a discretionary use development, uh, permit, if you would, Charlie.
A discretionary use development permit application has been received for a festival at Heritage Village on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, hosted by the Wayburn Trails Association. The subject property is Heritage Village at four hundred tenth Avenue Southeast. Heritage Village is a replica of a village community from the turn of the century up till the nineteen forties, which includes buildings and artifacts of that time. The zoning bylaw contains regulations regarding temporary uses and separates them into low impact and high impact use, with festivals and other similar attractions being high impact usage. Section five point nine point two B of the zoning bylaw requires that festivals and similar attractions um, shall require a development permit and the following discretionary use and follow the discretionary use process. The Wayburn Trails Association are hosting this outdoor festival to bring awareness to the Heritage Village and Trails, as well as provide exposure to artists that would be performing. As a discretionary use, a neighborhood notice would be required to be sent out to all property owners within a seventy five meter radius of the subject property, which notifies them of the, the application and the opportunity to provide their concerns and feedbacks to council. With this particular, uh, location, no notices were given as all residential properties are located outside of the required boundary. We have an image on screen of the intended site, um, in the Heritage Village. And when we did our calculations to the nearest building, it was a hundred and fifty seven meters, so even that is outside of the seventy five meter, uh, radius that we normally use. The outdoor festival is proposed to take place at Heritage Village with a stage located centrally within the park, food beverage stations, uh, around the perimeter, as well as spray painting and a mural workshop. The event will take place on August twenty fourth and is proposed to start at one P M with musical acts being wrapped up by eleven P M to mitigate any noise complaints once quiet hours start according to the noise bylaw. The proposed event is consistent with the official community plan as it encourages the use of parks and public spaces to include year round activities such as festivals and special events. The zoning bylaw, section five point nine, regulates temporary use class and classifies them into two categories, high impact and low impact. Festivals and similar attractions are considered high impact and requires that they go through discretionary use development permit process. Um, as mentioned above, that neighbors are to be, receive notices and council approval is required. Section five point nine three provides standards for temporary uses which require that high impact uses meet the following conditions. Have adequate washroom facilities and onsite parking. Required landscaping and parking areas for the principal use may not be occupied by the temporary use. Event shall not obstruct pedestrian or vehicular circulation, including vehicular site triangles. Adequate refuse cons, containers shall be made available and the site must be kept clean. Upon comple- upon completion, all structures, associated material and signage must be removed and the site left in a clean and tidy condition. Temporary uses are permitted for a maximum of three days. The proposed temporary use is only for one day, which is August twenty fourth, with setup starting one day prior, August twenty third. So, option one. Um, approve the development permit twenty twenty four point zero two two for a festival at Heritage Village located at four hundred tenth Avenue Southeast on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, subject to the following conditions. The placement of all structures, including tents, generators, staging, bleachers, et cetera, shall be to the satisfaction of the Ledger Services Department. An inspection from the Fire Department shall be required upon installation of tents and associated structures or equipments. Arrangements must be made for adequate washroom facilities, including a minimum of twenty washrooms with two barrier free washrooms. Arrangements must be made for parking and for shuttles to provide drop off and pickup from designated parking areas in the city. Adequate refuse containers shall be provided on site and the site must be kept clean. And upon completion of the event, all structures, associated material and sign, signage shall be removed and the site left in a t- neat and tidy condition. Option two, refuse a development permit twenty twenty four point zero two two for a festival at Heritage Village located at four hundred tenth Avenue Southeast on October twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, for the following reasons. Reasons for refusal would have to be provided by the person making the motion. Staff recommendation, the proposal complies with the requirements of the zoning bylaw in terms of temporary use requirements, washrooms, refuse containers, timeframes, et cetera. The proposed use is consistent with the intent of the park to be used for community events and the area is large enough to accommodate the event. Therefore, staff are recommending option one to provi- to approve the discretionary use development application with the conditions listed in option one.
Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that council approve the discretionary use development application twenty twenty four dash zero two two for a festival at Heritage Village on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, subject to the conditions presented by city staff.
Worship, I will second that motion.
Charlie, do you, uh, there, they still have to apply for their alcohol permit too?
They're not having alcohol at the event.
They're not having alcohol?
No, there's no alcohol, your worship, at the event, and if they did request, we would refuse that. It's, it's a, for Heritage Village is on a site that we want.
For me, for, for the Heritage?
Yeah, we have not asked for it, but if they did, we wouldn't accept that through parks.
Okay. Okay. On there. Anything else? Seeing nothing else, call the question, all in favor? Jared, the honestly. Okay, going from there, inquiries and announcements, if you have anything, oh, go ahead, Lauren.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I feel like a running calendar right now, but, um, the next week is gonna be a busy one for the city of Wayburn with a long weekend coming up. Um, so July first, there's going to be swimming at the pool and a cake cutting. Um, just watch the city website for times and stuff, but, uh, we're gonna have a really great day on July the first. Um, I'm gonna steal a counselor Van Betts' thunder and advertise for the Wayburn Agricultural Society. Um, their four H days begin on June the twenty ninth, so head on down there, support the kids. It's a lot of work that they put into training their animals and it's really neat to watch, so, um, that goes from the twenty ninth to the third of July. Uh, there's going to be a bike Uh there's going to be a bike rodeo uh held on July the third at Jubilee Park. Uh Weyburn City Police are partnering with the Weyburn Public Library to help educate kids on how to ride your bike safely during the summer. But they do ask that you register beforehand so that they know how many people are going to show up and you can call the library for that. Again, that's going to run from ten thirty to three o'clock at Jubilee Park on the third. And then uh the hundred and fifteenth fair days are the fourth uh to the sixth of July, so head on down to the Egg Society grounds. There's gonna be lots going on there and the Weyburn Chamber of Commerce Parade is on the fourth as well at ten thirty in the morning.
Thank you, Laura. And I, I'd just like to add that uh I've only been part of the board for the Agriculture Society since January and I see how hard these volunteers all work and the amount of time they put in. And they're still short of volunteers, so if anybody's looking to put in a few hours, contact the Egg Society. Maybe you could run it uh work at the gate or something like that. They might have some simple job that just takes a few hours, but uh they would certainly appreciate the, the help.
Curious if, if they need help getting rid of candy apples or anything at some point during the fair, I could probably be of assistance.
I suspect they do uh.
They've got that covered?
Richard, yeah, and I think, no, I, no, I think you can do that. You just have to put three hours in at the gate first.
Is that how it works? Okay.
The fireworks is when?
Let's uh keep watching the city website for that.
How about Jen, do you know anything about her parks? Yeah, you know?
The fireworks are on July first.
At about dusk, and they're over by the fairgrounds again.
Yes.
Okay. And, and that was where, because somebody said that they hadn't seen a poster, anything at all there. The uh July first, I think I just saw make mention there, I asked for some counsel. I was supposed to speak, but I'm away that, I'm gonna be away, so someone will have to uh make a large sound. Speak my path for the July first uh city uh fair. And somebody's walking the parade, fine, I believe, is doing that, actually, doing my spot in the parade.
That will be me again, your worship.
So I thought, I thought I'd just give you that look of horror there.
Your worship, I'd be happy to do it for you, but uh it's the first I've heard of it.
Anyway, the other one that uh that make mention is that uh the, the other uh day uh customer satellite went down to Estvan to, SaaS Power had a virtual reality uh set, uh set up down there at their, um what's it called? The, the uh.
The tech hub.
The tech hub, yes, the tech hub. I don't why it got set up in Estvan, I'm not sure, but anyway, the tech hub got set up and they have the and SaaS Power is down there and, and they were showing, we had a chance to put on a virtual uh reality headset and they walked through this nuclear, small nuclear reactor. And some of the, I'll tell you, give a few of the giveaway points, uh takeaway points, I should say giveaway, takeaway points and then um uh Laura can uh add to it. Well, the first one was that the site uh they said they're choosing still yet to choose one of two sites, but in the end, the reality is that both sites may be used uh eventually, because they are only about three thirty uh megawatt reactors is what roughly, and it's about two and a half times the carbon capture plant, what's carbon captures. It's about the same size, same amount of power as Shannon is putting out right now. And there, we've got four boilers, three, three boiler, three boilers working over at the other side, a boundary. And the reactors are approximately the size of a football field, but it uh five stories high and the main part is in the ground. They're down somewhat in the ground. It's where the reactor really is. And the model uranium they'll use over sixty years is, would fit inside of a size of a two-car garage. So that the model react uranium is really, really minimal and the amount of power we're gonna get out of there is, is quite interesting. I mentioned to him that Bill Gates uh is a heavy, heavy investor in a Wyoming reactor using uh sodium as a cooling one. And he said that one is quite a bit different because it will heat uh water to a thousand degrees, which is it has a lot more industrial applications, whereas this one only heats to seven hundred degrees, which is quite adequate. These small nuclear reactors are seven hundred degrees and that's quite adequate for power. And knowing that the water uh turns to steam at one hundred degrees, so it only heats to seven hundred and all the physics. Mister Hicks can explain more of the physics between fission and fusion here, too. There's a fission uh one, not a fusion reactor. So it's all, it was all very, very interesting to see what is moving forward and it's gonna be in about ten years' time possibly. Go ahead, Laura, anything more to add?
Um it was really interesting. I appreciate the opportunity to go down and learn more. Um I know it's not in the Weyburn area, but it will provide um some more jobs for the southeast area and I appreciate working as a partnership in the southeast. Um also to that, um on June the twenty seventh, so later this week on Thursday, representatives from SaaS Power will be at the Weyburn Legion from three until six o'clock doing a presentation. And if people have questions, they are more than welcome to head over and ask.
And lastly, uh the last thing I have to speak on is that uh there was a notice amendment random, as you probably saw in the newspapers and Weyburn, discover Weyburn, that uh the college, community college, plus the nursing uh school of nursing out of Saskatoon signed an agreement that they're gonna bring uh school of nursing back to Weyburn. I said back to Weyburn because it was here in nineteen sixty and politically got moved. But anyway, that's, it is bringing back to Weyburn and there's the campus, the initial program will start this fall, which is the introduction to it, and then the three-year will start in the beginning of uh twenty twenty five, or in the fall of twenty twenty five. And that'll be the three-year, and then they'll just keep processing uh people through wherever it's going into nursing. And there's about forty candidates, I think, is what it's gonna hold each time that uh that goes through. So this will be, it's very exciting for Weyburn and it's always been one of my thoughts that there, and some of our council's thoughts, that that's a part of making Weyburn part of a college, a kind of a college town. And this most certainly is a one step towards making Weyburn as this college town, where you have a lot of uh people coming in. So that is very good. Brings a lot of economy to the city. Anything else for anybody?
Uh your worship, if you can uh forgive a brief conflict of interest, uh Weyburn Credit Union's Community Appreciation BBQ is this Thursday, the twenty seventh. Um Weyburn's own Brayden King will be performing and uh there'll be a barbecue to celebrate.
And that starts at what time? What time to what time?
Uh barbecue starts at five, runs till seven.
Uh five, okay, on Thursday, so.
Burgers, chips, and drink for five dollars.
Oh, there, there you go. Oh, thank you. Okay, we'll be there. We'll be there. We'll be there for supper. Well, do you have a double cheeseburger? Okay. All right, and uh yeah, Brayden and Brayden has done very well, too, so. And it'll be nice to see uh local talent uh going forward. Anything else on here? Seeing nothing else, uh we have, uh there's no notice on motions. And just before we leave, next council meeting is when? Because we're getting into summer.
July fifteenth, your worship.
July fifteenth, we'll be back here July fifteenth. Same bath station, same bath channel. There we go, so July fifteenth. And with that, we are, call the meeting adjourned.
If you'd like to share your feedback on the program you just watched, contact us today.